Hit it again. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the first regular meeting of the Spalding County Water Authority. We're going to start with the invocation by Mr. Jim Skinner, followed up by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Dick Morrow.
Good morning. Let's pray. Most heaven graces, Father of the Lord, we give you thanks for this day. Thank you for each of the members of the committee, this board, and our employees. Lord, just be with them and their families. Lord, be with us as we make decisions concerning water and sewer for Spalding County. Help us to be faithful stewards of what you so freely give us. Through your son's most holy and blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
John, you want to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the agenda.
I got a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second? I got a second. Motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
You raised your hand. I saw her.
All opposed? Unanimous. Next item, election of chairperson and vice chairman. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Wyndham to begin the nomination. Lala, nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the nominations for chairman will open, and after that, there's no second required for a nomination. It's not debatable. It is amendable. And when there are no further nominations, I will close nominations. A motion is not required to close nominations. So I now declare that nominations for chair are open. Are there any nominations for the position of chair for the 2025 calendar year? Ms. Fanning?
Yes, I nominate the current chairman for the chairman for this coming year.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Wade Cannon. Are there any other nominations for chair? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor of the appointment of Wade Cannon as chair for the 2025 calendar year, please raise your hand. All right, that's unanimous, sir. You are, you are chair. Well, it was as close to unanimous as you can get without you voting. And actually, not voting is considered a yes vote unless you have a reason to abstain. So it's unanimous. I will turn it back over to you, sir.
Uh, next, next item is nomination of the election of vice chairman for the 2025 calendar year.
Nominate that Dick Morrow.
Okay, Clay's beating me to it. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'm going to close it. All in favor of Dick Morrow for vice chair, please raise your hand. All opposed?
You got more votes, you know. I'd be embarrassed if I didn't.
Next item, citizen comments. Has anybody signed up to speak? Nobody signed up to speak. We'll skip over that. Next item on the agenda minutes.
Chairman, I move we approve the December 18th schedule minutes as presented.
And the executive session, too.
And the executive session, yes, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Your motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Unanimous. Next item, consider acceptance of the January 8th, 2025 joint committee meeting minutes.
Chairman, I move we accept these minutes.
Motion by Mr. Morrow. Do I have a second? We have a second with Mr. Davis. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to the next item, special committee report. We're going to turn this over to Dick and Clay for the joint planning and finance committee reports.
I'll defer to Clay. He's going to...
Thank you. We had two items on the agenda. AKB sewer project funding discussion. We asked the general manager to explore potential funding mechanisms like loans, grants, and bonds. The consensus was reached that the board should direct the general manager to formally request funding from the Board of Commissioners to help support the ongoing management and operational expenses. The general manager will provide the information we requested on funding at the next committee meeting. The second item was the 2025 City of Griffin wholesale water rate. The new wholesale water rate is $6.781, and it went into effect January 1, 2024. Those were the two agenda items that we was on the agenda for the joint planning and finance committee.
And both of those are on new business.
Thank you. Moving on to the financial report. I'm going to turn it over to the, uh, Ms. Erica Dye for the presentation of the financial statements. Deputy County Manager of Administration, Ms. Erica Dye.
Good morning.
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 Are you waiting for us to say something?
I know. It's really early.
Yeah, early. It's Monday or night. It feels like Monday to me.
Monday, part two. No, part three. Monday, part three. That's right. All right, for the month ending on December 31st for fiscal year 2025, the revenues for the Water Authority are at $5.8 million as compared to the expenses, which is $5,868,000. The cash account for both the United and the Truist operating accounts are $4,361,345. The money market investment accounts at United Bank currently has a balance of $11,883,499. The depreciation reserve balance is $972,325 after the year-end adjustment was made for the audit. The depreciation reserve balance is nine hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred twenty-five after the year-end adjustment was made for the audit. The twenty fifteen bonds, bond sinking fund ending balance remains at one million ninety-one thousand seventy-five dollars. There's a slight deficiency of revenue as of December thirty-first, which is sixty-five thousand four hundred seventy-three. Most of that can be attributed to an encumbrance for purchases not yet made of fifty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars. And I also wanted to note that there was a G dot reimbursement that was booked to the water line relocations back in September for two hundred sixty thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars. I know you guys were anticipating that and wanted to make sure that it was booked. Um, we did receive that on September the fifth. And just an update on the AKB sewer project, um using the ARPA funds, the remaining balance for that is one million five hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars.
Did you say that that was the the G dot reimbursement for the Flint Bridge? What, what?
It would be affiliated with the Flint Bridge.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Can you spit that uh ARPA number back out for me one more time? I can't write that fast.
That's fine. One million five hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars.
But you show it all in, uh, we had to spend it by then, you have it encumbered, is all encumbered for?
Yes, sir, we, well, according to the federal guidelines, it's all been, um, we have pro- uh funded the project allocated.
Wanted to verify it, thank you.
Yes, sir. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them or direct them to your general manager.
Erica, I have a question. We're basically running breakeven.
As of right now, yes, sir. And like I said, that's because there's the the encumbrances.
Right, I understand, I mean, sixty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Basically running breakeven.
Yes, sir.
So, looking into the future, should we increase our, for example, our debt? That would negatively affect cash flow, would it not? Let's say sinking fund went from a million to a million seven.
Well, I mean, that would basically depend on what you guys have decided on your water rates. If you increase the water rates, then that should offset the debt, in my opinion.
Understand. But if we did nothing, if we did not increase water rates, then it would negatively impact cash flow.
Yes, sir, I would presume so, yes.
I I guess I don't understand that because if, if the the new water rate is less than what we are, why would we want to increase to make the difference?
Well, you get.
You're getting more new, you're getting new customers.
Yeah, we're getting more customers.
On the water line.
The, our wholesale rate's going down, but what, we're still scrubbing, which Joseph's gonna talk about here in a minute, we're still scrubbing the database to implement what we had talked about with the Raftell's presentations. And then we're also, in part of this meeting, we're increasing our um tap fees, meter fees, things like that, things that we've been subsidized over the years. And so, Clay, or Cal's right. If you just go out and spend a bunch of money right now, the way we are currently doing things, yeah, we're gonna be running negative. But that's not, that's just a piece of the picture. It's not the whole picture. Um, Raftell's is water model and water rate study, actually all these capital improvement projects that we have, show that our water rates can fund those. So the money we got sitting in the bank that we've been saving for, saving for that, don't necessarily need to be, we don't need to be worrying about capital improvement costs. The next part is a lot of the capital improvement projects that we were planning are in the area, well, we're talking about putting a sewer plant. I personally don't wanna do a capital improvement project out there until we figure out we're gonna do the sewer plant. Because once we did the sewer plant, if we do the sewer plant, the capital improvement projects are gonna change. So it's gonna be a waste of money to even worry about that side of the county right now, as far as capital improvement projects. Because that is gonna directly impact anything we have to do out there with water lines. And then we also have some other stuff coming online that's not really public knowledge yet, but someone else is about to pay a lot of that capital improvement cost that we were planning on, it's actually someone else about to cover that for us.
I hate I ask that question. But thank you. But thank you, I got, got the part that I need out of it.
I brought that up in the, in the committee meeting, um, and I was hoping Cal was gonna be at, he couldn't make it.
Okay.
Um, that's where that discussion of, you know, we're gonna do this, how do you want to do it? Because I think we got multiple options to do it, I really do. I didn't, when we first undertook that, I didn't think there was a chance in hell we could pay for it, but that's just not the case.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Erica Dye?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the financial statements presented by Erica.
I have a motion. I have a second, multiple seconds. Any further discussion, all in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll comment one other comment on this. Once we increase all these tap fees and the things that are coming here, uh, that deficit's gonna go away.
Well, some.
Yet to be seen.
Well, some of that, we're, you know, you're looking at money that we've spent, but we haven't got our money for the City of Griffin yet either. They're, they're running thirty, sixty days.
Forty, forty-five days.
Behind, so. It's the end of the year number we really need to look at, once they give us our last check for that year. Next item, general managers' report.
So looking at the customers added since uh July one, uh, we've added a hundred ninety-nine customers, um, which is showing a year-over-year increase of around roughly two percent. Water sales, we are tracking, um, we're selling more than our budgeted amount by roughly uh nine and a half percent. So everything is looking good there. The non-revenue water, nothing um really to report for the month of December. Um, the activities have just been typical um water, water loss due to uh flushing or um typical flushing in water mains. The meter sales summary, we're still running a deficit of roughly thirty-two meters behind where we expected to be. Um, but our revenues are where we thought they were. And then the projects, um, I will tell you, last Friday, uh, we met with the progressive design build team and we are um really honing in on the value engineering side. Uh, we're, we're really looking at the solid, the sludge management part. Um, we have a couple different options. Do we want to land apply, which is typical? Do we want to take to a landfill or do we wanna do a hybrid approach? So, um, the meeting was well, uh, went well. We anticipate having our comments submitted to the state within the next twenty days, uh, addressing their comments on the um reports that we sent to them in order to get our MPDS permit. I still think we should get our MPDS permit within the next forty-five to sixty days, so the plant will be uh, it will be permitted for a discharge. Other than that, I think we're, we're still working with outside entities on possible funding options. Uh, we do have a meeting with Jifa on the twenty-second to look at what type of terms they would give us. We met with um the bond issuer, Raymond James, Todd Barnes, with Raymond James. Um, and he said after the meeting with Jifa, we will get together and we will make sure that we have something to present to you guys for the February meeting, which could be a, a Jifa approach, a Jifa bond approach, a Jifa approach with some outside uh money from developers. Um, so I, I think there'll be a, a good path forward.
Where uh are we gonna do, where will we do land application at?
Uh, well, so we reached out to Centagro and they're, they're a um, a typical provider of those services in this area. And they said it would take roughly nine to twelve months to permit some fields. They have a field in Alabama they're looking at, um, but they're, a short answer, there's really no local.
And we're gonna produce enough solids to even make that worthwhile to somebody?
It's gonna be very expensive.
So we're better off just taking the land for it. What's a dump truck, five hundred thousand dollars in the landfills next door?
Uh, well, so if you look at what the City of Griffin did, the City of Griffin had dump trailers and you could buy a dump trailer for.
Ten.
Ten, fifteen thousand dollars. And you could haul it, we have talked to the City of Griffin, they are receptive to possibly allowing us to take uh, dewatered sludge to their new dryer at the Shoal Creek wastewater plant. So we're, we're gonna be discussing that in more detail this Friday.
Is hundred percent solids or liquids? It's all liquid?
So, coming out of the backside of the plant, the best that we can do with any, without any dewatered solution uh, is roughly one to two percent solid, so it's mainly liquid. In order to take it to the City of Griffin, they would need a minimum solids content of twenty percent. So you have to, that's gonna take some additional through a screw press and some uh polymer.
You, you get the, you, you send the sludge or the slurry through a, a press where you press the water out or it's, it's traveling on a belt and you just force it through the rollers or you can put it in the centrifuge and spin the water out, God help you if it gets out of balance. Um, and then even after that point, it's still gonna have water content in it. And you gotta dry it some more because they used to dump it, there's landfill up in Lana, they used to haul those to, and what was it, ten percent? Twenty, their old, their old standard turned out, it was a little too wet. And so they came in one day and the landfill had moved. It, they had floated from, from the stuff. And so they tightened up those regulations and now it has to be drier.
If this project goes through eventually, aren't we gonna need an incinerator?
So an incinerator, you have, with solids, uh, you have two options. You can either just, you can land apply it, which you really don't need to do anything, you want it in a water slurry. You can dewater it.
We don't wanna land apply it in Alabama.
Correct. Um, the reason why they're looking at Alabama is because the, the fields that they were permitting in the City of Griffin's name that were local, it appears that all the property owners have kinda, their, their kids are getting it and the kids don't want any, they're, they're selling the property. So, um, I agree. The thing, I don't think land application is the long-term solution. Um, taking it to a landfill, landfills are, they have a new um criteria where they're no longer, they're gonna make you dewater to a certain percentage because of new landfill regulations.
They also are trying to get rid of organics as well.
They don't want sludge taking up area for trash.
The water seeps down to the liner and then everything floats on it.
So, the long-term play is, uh, at some point, we will have to do some type of dewatering. We're trying to vet, is it, do we go ahead and bite the bullet now? Um, to do, of the plant our size, it's a, about a five to six hundred thousand dollar capital investment plus roughly ten grand a month of ongoing operations every, every month. So it's, it's capital intensive. Um, we're not gonna produce a whole lot of sludge day one. So getting a land applier to come, get a contract with us, we're gonna be paying a premium because they're basically gonna come out of their way just to take a little bit of sludge that we're, we're, we're paying a bunch of um road costs.
Have you looked at what the payback is on going ahead and making the investment now?
We're currently, we're currently doing that, so um, based on the conversation that I'll be having with the City of Griffin on Friday, we were waiting for a couple of different uh data points where they can look at that uh discounted cash flow and net present value.
I personally.
I just see eventually it's gonna have to happen and while we're planning, we might as well.
Uh, really personally, I, I've looked at it, you know, and I know they talked about a dewatering box and it's a lot cheaper option, but it's better just to go ahead and spend the extra money on the equipment now while all, every, all the people and all that construction equipment is sitting there.
Oh, you do.
First just paying them to come back, because it's gonna, that five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars is gonna turn into about two and a half million.
I, I agree, while we're planning, it ought to be part of the plan.
Yeah, I'm kinda, I'm, they're, they're doing the value engineering, they're giving us like a, you know, uh.
Options.
Options, the trim of the car kinda situation, you know, we can go through and pick what we want, but I, we're not, Clayton County Water Authority, you know, at sixty million gallons or, yeah, sixty MGD a day, they don't press sludge every day. I just, we're not gonna be producing that much sludge to justify someone coming to get it and land applying. I, I don't see it. But then again, I didn't think we could pay for this either, so don't listen to me.
So that's the, that's kinda the, where we're at with the sewer project. Um, we received the draft report of the water model uh that we're currently working through to make sure that all the, the document is buttoned up and we are, we should be getting our water rate final report to review uh, within the next ten to fifteen days.
Chairman.
As far as projects, do you know what's going on with the corner of Wani and sixteen?
That would be right there.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, that's, that's right there where um. I'm not a, what, there's a, there's a piece of property for sale, right?
Well, it's been graded off. I don't know if you've been out that way, but graded off and there. Big concrete culverts and.
North side.
Spalding County, south.
South.
Parker, it's on the um, construction plan review list.
They're gonna put in something, I don't know where they're gonna get water, or what they're gonna do.
Oh, that's that uh, that's that uh.
Oh, I, I think it's gonna be a well that's out there.
That's a uh.
A well?
It's a shop they approved that's gonna equip police cars and stuff like that, ain't it? Yeah, they're gonna be putting equipment on police cars and ambulances and things like that. It's like a little emergency personnel accessory shop.
Well, in Secretary Park.
Yeah, but they're gonna be on well and something.
It's not a big uh, well, it's not a big building either, if I remember correctly.
So is water not available there?
No, so the water stops right there at uh High Falls in sixteen.
We, we discussed that a year or so ago, about water comes out and then goes, loops around and get out, back out and we're about continuing water out sixteen because of those things.
Remember, one of the proj, well, of the ten or eleven projects that the water model um showed as future capital improvement projects, the AKB corridor was one. And that corridor was basically removed and put in as a project-specific water main project. Meaning until you have a large user, it's kinda, you're gonna hurt more of your system. Yes.
Amazon's putting a data center at River Walk and they're gonna pay for the water line all the way across sixteen, we don't have to pay for it now. Well, Amazon.
We're in talks with them, yes. So Butts County Water Authority is in need of water. The City of Griffin's got capacity, I know that they're in talks with the city on um, looking at a capital or capacity recovery fee. So I know contracts are being um swirled around with different entities and we, we're starting to get into that discussion as well. But we've given them a, a flow rate that we could provide at the county line. So uh, I, more to come. I anticipate y'all really getting into the weeds with us um in February.
Will we benefit from that?
Absolutely.
So they're having to be using the amount of water to get some out of that, then of the water party customer.
Well, so the way though, so the fact that Amazon Web Services would be purchasing water through Butts County Water Authority, Butts County Water Authority would be purchasing through their wholesale agreement with the City of Griffin through our line. So how we would benefit is we would get a line extended for, for nothing.
And the transmission fee.
Transmission.
We get a wheeling fee.
We would, but it's, I, I mean.
Not much, but we would get something.
It's one percent of the volume, yes.
Just don't, don't even say transmission fee. Just, just don't say it, because my head might fall off.
Yeah.
We just screwed ourselves on that.
But we do get a truck line, what I call, a major line out to the sixteen at no cost.
That's right.
So we'll have, that's a huge advantage too, that's several million dollars.
So right now, I mean, the, the, based on the water model uh estimated cost, you're talking that could be a, anywhere between six to eight million dollar line.
A, a line from where to where?
So High Falls is where it stops right now.
Right.
Uh, it's a twelve-inch main, we would take it from a twelve to a twenty. And we would take a twenty-inch main all the way to the county line. Right there at uh Bailey Jester, right past our plant.
And, and no cost to us.
That's why I was saying the capital improvement, let's just, don't pay attention to that right now.
So this development on Wani Road, I have a feeling they'll probably be a water customer at some point. Because when their well goes dry or when they can't facilitate water anymore, they're gonna want a reliable source and it'll be right there for them.
Chairman, may I move that we accept the general manager's report?
Yes, sir. I got a motion to accept the general manager's report, I got a second already in the air. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? New business.
Would it be fair to say that our next planning meeting, a lot of these things are gonna be discussed?
Well, you know, when we talked about the, the funding and everything, we need to. Well, you know, when we talked about the the funding and everything, we need to we 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 really need to hurry it and nail that now.
Our next committee meetings here are gonna be full of all this.
What?
Our next committee meetings are gonna have a lot of this discussions.
Yes, yes.
Um, next item, new business nominations and election of the secretary treasurer for the twenty twenty-five year calendar year, twenty twenty-five calendar, I said that wrong. Twenty twenty-five calendar year.
Chairman, I move a we reappoint our current secretary treasurer.
I have a nomination to appoint Mister Joseph Johnson, are there any other nominations?
Looking for volunteers, right?
Yeah, but.
I will close nominations, um. Motion, Mister Morrow, second by Mister Davis, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, unanimous. You got more votes than me too.
Boy, same comment.
Next item, consider approval of the proposed twenty twenty-five regular meeting schedule.
If there are no objections from the board, I move we accept that schedule.
I would like to make an objection.
Okay, which one?
I'd like to strike the December meeting.
The December seventeenth one?
Hold it, yeah. I think we earned a little break for a month, won't ya?
Just depends on what's going on.
Yeah. Well, if we tell him now, he can plan around it.
Do you wanna do it now or later depending?
Third Wednesday, continue the current schedule, third Wednesday.
Except for one exception.
I didn't hear that, sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna continue the third Wednesday.
So do are we gonna ask for an 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 exception to put possible cancellation on December seventeen? Because I mean, I think it's it's better to have a meeting on schedule and to cancel it.
Whatever y'all thinks best.
Than it is to not have it and then try to figure out where we can stick it in there.
I agree.
I mean, I agree with you, December is a hard time to have meeting, but.
My motion is as accepted as it is, so. We can cancel if we need.
Yeah, I'm okay with the all of us need to know the seventeenth maybe if there's something not going on that's hot, we're going to uh postpone that delay deny.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, unanimous? Next item, consider directing the general manager to formally request funding from the board of commissioners for the Spalding County Water Authority Sewer Project.
Mr. Chairman, this was consensus at our uh committee meeting. And so I move that we do direct the general manager to submit the letter requesting funding from the board of commissioners for sewer project.
I believe this is what the commissioners had asked us to do too, Parker.
Yes.
Any further discussion about submitting the letter to the commissioners asking for money?
Yes, I think there needs should needs to be a specific amount.
It it does have it, the letter is right, it should be on your screen.
Should my motions.
Okay, that's nice.
So my motion specify that's that letter as presented.
That's my motion, I.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, unanimous? Need to sign that too now, or you need to sign it?
Yes, I'll sign it.
Okay. Uh, next item, consider approval to maintain current retail water wa- rates until completion of customer database scrubbing. By Skal- Spalding County Water Authority staff and system testing by Coggedale. The new proposed rate structure as approved by the board on December eighteenth twenty twenty-four is scheduled to be implemented no later than Q two or Q three of twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve uh the maintaining the current retail water rates at the completion of a customer database scrubbing by their staff and system testing with Coggedale to be implemented uh as recommended by our general manager.
Motion, do I have a second? I got a second, Mister Brandon. Any further discussion? Cal, you need to be caught up on this one real quick.
I'm up, I'm up.
Okay. He's biting his tongue.
I'm I'm good.
Alright. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, unanimous? Just try to shoot for Q two, please.
I've I've.
Try to.
So the just to give you an update, the data scrubbing has been done, uh we are sending it to the city of Griffin. Once they get it, um I'm still waiting on them to give us an exact timeframe from Coggedale on the back testing to make sure that the new rate structure that was proposed, option three is proposed by Raff Tellus. They're gonna test it to make sure everything is working right. Um, I I haven't got a date from that, but I think I really think by the end of June, it should be ready to go. And just to give you an idea, if we keep our rate the same and we don't do any changes, based on our budgeted projection, we should roughly put a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in our account. I know Mister Skinner asked that last year.
Next item, I consider approval of the water system capital cost recovery fee as proposed in the approved water rate analysis presentation presented by Raff Tellus. I'm gonna let Joseph run this through it by everybody one more time.
So. So remember when Raff Tellus did our water rate study, they took the assets that were on the books that the Water Authority paid for and we basically crafted a dollar per gallon of capacity that this system supports. Um, without having this cap- it's called a capital recovery fee. Without having it, our rate payers have basically been subsidizing development all throughout the county. So this is a way to ensure that anybody that ties on to the line now will pay to access that capacity that has been pre-bought by everyone in the past and ensure that regardless of um are you a residential customer or a non-residential customer? That you're gonna be paying your fair share, so it's gonna be equitable across all parties. So what you're looking at here is for a residential home, it's gonna be twenty-three hundred dollars just to access the water plus the tap fee. For a non-residential, we have a couple of different options. We can either take a um approach of we can scale it based on meter size because a meter has a certain rated capacity. Or we can do, we can take the proposed or anticipated average day demand or max day and then divide it by our E R U, which is the equivalent residential unit to get a fee. So we can, we're gonna, we have options available to us to assess both residential and non-residential units. But just know that we're anticipating, we're estimating that the current capacity in our system is roughly three point two five million gallons a day. You may say, well, how did we determine this? Well, we looked at our average day demand and without having a water plant that we're actually producing water, there's really no way to tell how much capacity we we pre-bought um or prepaid for. So we just took a multiplier based on it was roughly a one and a quarter multiplier from our average day demand. So as we increase our capacity in the future, we we will scale our capital recovery fee a appropriately.
Well, this sheet uh does not specify which method you're gonna use for the water meter or water usage choices.
You mean like one, two, three of what we talked about?
Well, that thi- this unless I understand it, this this has the meter size and a cost. However, if you don't you charge them the full cost cuz they're not gonna use the full meter, I mean, pipe size.
How, so we, the way that I anticipate um levying this is getting when a um commercial business or non-residential uh development comes in, they have to give us a proposed estimated use. We're, it's either gonna default to twenty-three hundred dolla- or twenty-three hun- yeah, twenty-three hundred dollars if they're not a big user, meaning probably the Wani Road development. That's probably the equivalent to a a single family residential home. When you look at it on a day to day basis, we're gonna take their proposed use and divide it by our E R U in order to levy that fee. But this this next, the second page shows the equivalencies, but the language basically says that we're not required to use a maximum amount charged, that um we can decide to charge a lesser amount.
Okay, and that's what, so this is some subjective rate proposal. You're gonna decide which way you go, whether use it all or not based on that, right?
Yes.
Like say you had a data center come in.
Yeah, I I underst- I understand the this, I just it's unusual to approve a subjective rate proposal.
Well, the way that we show it as nine dollars and twenty-one cents a gallon, that to me is the fairest way to do it. We we know how much water you're gonna be using and that's that's how we're gonna levy it.
So so I think and I and I'm not trying to put any thoughts or say that I can read in a dick's head. But I think what I would like to see is for the record, what the actual that actual plan that that we're working off of. So if these numbers are based off of this plan, then someone who's not here with us can come back later and be able to see why we got to where we are here. So I mean, I because I think that's what he's asking, we had these three plans and then we had how it would look. Getting to this, there's no explanation for anyone looking at it from the outside.
Well, this, I I got that. So if we approve this and we approve it with the understanding that you're gonna use the estimated volume method? That would take away the.
The ambiguity.
The ambiguity?
Yep, yep. Okay.
Joseph, is our E R U determined by the size of the pipes we have underground?
No, it's just a typical um residential usage. So if you look at literature, um a typical residential unit or residential home is roughly two hundred and fifty gallons a day. So that's how that's how we came up with this E R U.
That's a number that's nationwide?
It's it based on A W W A best practices, yes.
It gives us some flexibility to make sure all we're charging is legally defensible.
Because so you may say, well, okay, wh- what's our average day? Well, it depends on it depends on subdivision. So an older subdivision uses more water because they don't have water conservation fixtures, right? But to put it in perspective, um Stonebriar uses roughly a hundred and sixty gallons a day of consumption versus Sun City Peachtree in the summer or in the wintertime uses around eighty gallons a day. So we know that there may be less people in Sun City, but the two fifty accounts for that maximum day, meaning hey, this is the the worst that you'll ever see. So there is a peaking factor that's already assessed in that number. Does that make sense?
So Joseph, one other question. So when we we're going through this thing with trying to figure out which customers that the city had that should have actually been ours. I would be interested to know what is the percentage of those customers that inaccurately gave us what they projected as their water use and consequently ended up being with somebody else? And how will we how will we be able to determine that if if a if an industry or commercial comes in and says, I'm 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 gonna need a hundred and fifty gallons a day, they're telling us that, but they don't really know that. You you see what I'm saying? So so you get down the road and you have projected this thing, but you really only need something different.
This is, I'm glad you asked that question or brought that up because so with this flow with water meter equivalency is so let's say I'm a developer and I come in and I'm gonna go in the Lakes of Green Valley, I'm gonna be a Spalding County Water Authority customer. I'm putting a ten inch main and that's gonna serve my building. Well, a ten inch main, you can take forty-two hundred gallons a minute through that line. But you tell me, I'm only gonna use ten thousand gallons of water a day. Well, something's not right, something doesn't add up to me. So that's why we will use um that. There's gonna be a deeper discussion during the plan review phase and through all this data acquisition. Because if you have a ten inch main, you're anticipating a pretty large water event. So maybe maybe that one we bring to the board and we say, I don't I don't think our normal way of calculating the E R U is gonna be sufficient for this customer. I recommend we go to the the um the meter equivalency. Because we can't dictate what size line a development needs. But I think what it's gonna do is it's gonna make people be a little bit more um conscientious.
We're only running one main to these buildings right?
Uh, depends on how they.
We're not doing fire flow in all separate line already.
Uh, it we don't we don't dictate, we let them dictate. We will tell them what we would prefer, we would prefer one meter, one line, but if you have a de- if you have a warehouse that only needs. Well, here's the thing, so now say we say we make every non-residential development put in one dedicated main that will serve both your potable and your fire suppression system. Now we've just made them go from one backflow preventer to multiple backflow preventors at their building, which costs a lot of money. Uh, because if you have uh one line that goes in, you're gonna go into a mechanical room and then that ma- mechanical room is gonna branch off and serve the fire suppression system. You could have um potable water fountains and all that stuff. You will want to separate your potable system from your fire suppression system because that water is never moving.
What's the accuracy on the larger meters that lower flows?
Uh, when you use a fire, an approved fire line meter, it's accurate to um ninety-eight point five percent. But it's a.
At at minimum flow.
Yes, at minimum flow, because that piece of brass for a fire line meter, to put in perspective, an eight inch meter will cost you about fifty grand.
Okay, let me ask you this. If we approve this page here, if you will, this presentation. What is the wording needed to say that you're gonna use a this method of computing? The estimated, what what's the wording as opposed to just approving this?
We will take the um provide date or provide demand, development demand.
Development demand.
Yep, and use it as a ratio of the E R U.
Okay.
And we will provide you a, in the next meeting, I'll have a calculation that will show you. But just know that if if a development that we see is kinda not fitting in this box, we will bring it to you and have you vote specifically on that. Hey, do we wanna deviate from this just because of X, Y, and Z?
If it's a residential development, then the E R U would automatically require two hundred and fifty gallons of that.
That's it, they're at twenty-three hundred bucks. So anybody, any new home going forward and.
Only applies really to commercial or industrial.
That's right, that's right. Large, large. Yeah, large, large users.
This was Raff Tellus's design, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, Mister Chairman, I move that we approve this um water system capital cost recovery fee as presented with the understanding on commercial development, we use your wording.
Well, it's.
I couldn't write that so.
Yeah, it's here, it it's.
Well, it says decides to.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of.
So so this is a plan, which means that it can be fluid.
Yep.
Okay, so so we're not locked in cement here.
No.
If we we see that something is not really working for us, we can come back in as a board, we can tweak.
Well, it's it's. It's dependent on engineering analyst analysis, um. And this this came this came from Raff Tellus, right?
That's right, yep.
I'm I'm.
Basically, you said it provided developer demand and use as estimated, I guess it is.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, that approval with those words that that's the system you're gonna use for commercial accounts.
Yes, cuz we will take their max, their peak and their average, figure out the rate for both and then understand.
I I just.
Yep.
I just wanna know that there's a plan here specified, so.
When would this become effective?
Today. But we we really wanted to to do this to get ahead of the um to make sure that we're we're capturing uh the the fees that we should be levying, that we should be levying way in the past.
So so the last part is effective today?
Uh, we we would appreciate that.
And I struggled through the motions, everybody got it, so that's the motion.
Alright, I got a motion.
I'll second that laaah motion.
Well, basically, you're proving as is.
Yes.
Is that how I'm understanding this? I just wanna clarify for.
Yes.
Okay. I got a motion by Mister Morrow, a second by Mister Davis, any further discussion?
I have a question.
Bam.
And really, it it it's tangential to this, um it really only regards residential properties.
Is there any discussion regarding what happens if a person can't pay twenty-three hundred dollars?
So we are cur-
Do we have a program?
So this, the, in the water sales contract with the city of Griffin, we naturally default to their collection process and their billing methods. I know they have a hardship.
They, they do.
They do.
But we don't.
By default, we do.
We have theirs.
Aren't we adopting theirs?
Correct.
Rest of the contract, yeah.
The question that we have posed to them is, in the event that we levy this capacity fee, exactly, that's what we're working out. We need to make sure that if they put it on the bill, that it's not a, it's a direct pass-through to us, kinda like what our, uh, base charge would be. We're working with them to, to understand the particulars. We don't anticipate that being a-
It's not a big thing, but they're certainly, it's-
It, it will happen.
In the next fifty years, it's gonna come up.
Oh, I, I bet you in the next two months it'll happen.
We had a pretty robust discussion on this issue in the committee meeting. And for people moving in and building a house or buying a house, we had no problem.
It's not a problem now.
Our concern was you've got some old couple out there struggling and their well goes dry and they had no choice but to come hook. And they've been long-term, you know, citizens, taxpayers. Do we have a hardship plan for these sorts of difficulties?
There's an awful lot of fixed income and below poverty level people in that.
That's right. And, and so what Joseph said during, is he wants to research this hardship issue a little further on the city. And I'm expecting we'll come back with some sort of a hardship policy that we approve. Because I, I worry about that very thing.
If I had to guess, it's gonna be the city of Griffin's hardship policy. That's pretty much what our contract with them says.
But the hardship policy only refers to paying your actual bill, not, not your tying on to the line or the capacity recovery fee or any of the meter fee charges.
Not your meter.
And so, 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 yeah, we can adopt, or we, uh, through the contract, we follow that, but it only deals with if your bill is passed in.
So typically, when the hardship would be applied is in the event that you had a water main break or water line leak and your bill goes from a hundred dollars a month to thirteen hundred dollars, you could apply for the hardship and use the broken pipe policy and that hardship would allow you to, I, I mean, it's, it's pretty robust, the level of information that you have to provide. I mean, it's, it's almost invasive what they're asking for.
I, I agree with Gwendolyn, it does really cover the hardship. We've discussed some very poor person that loses a well and has to hook on. So I'm expecting if we approve this, that you're gonna come back with a little more data on this and we can discuss this.
As long as we don't lose sight of it, it's on the table, I'm fine with it too. We just don't need to lose sight of it.
And we are gonna reach out to the Spalding County Grants Administrator and see if there's any, um, funding available to allow for this type of, uh, effort.
Could you also look at other water systems? Because, I mean, we always kinda measure ourselves against the city of Griffin just because we're contractor, we're in contract with them. But I'll be interested to know what other communities are doing or if that is an issue for them. Be, be, because, I mean, you know, if you're, if you're owning your house and you need to go from well to, to whatever else, there's an assumption that, okay, you're a property owner. Not, not that I'm a person renting this house and then that's still the responsibility of the property owner. So it gets much deeper than that, but at the end of the day, um, if someone is accounting for allowing people to pay their capacity recovery fee at some later time or through some other way, I would be interested to see if anybody is doing that.
Yeah, the only thing that I, I'm, I kinda, I, I get worried about is if we start allowing for, obviously, we would want a, like, homeowner versus a builder policy, where the builder, you're gonna pay your capacity recovery fee before.
I think all that is what we're expecting to understand better in the future.
Back up one quick question. The ERU is based on five eighths or three-quarter meter or?
Yeah, typical five eighths, one-inch meter. Yeah, it's so, it's a typical residential meter, which residential meters are up to one inch, yes.
But the, the, the two-fifty is, is based on the five eighths? So if somebody wants a one-inch, then it's a multiplier?
No, so it, a typical residential meter is either a five eighths or a one-inch. So anything over, uh-
Anything over one inch?
Yes.
The multiplier applies.
Yes. Because we don't allow one and a half inch ma- or meters. We, it's five eighths, which is a typical three-quarter, one inch, and then it goes two, three, four, six, eight.
That's, the five eighths and one inch are considered the same?
Correct.
For the ERU? Anything over one inch, then the multiplier kicks into effect.
Yes, that's when we will, look at that ratio.
Alright, well, I got a motion and a second. I think we beat this one to death. All in favor, please raise your hand? All opposed, unanimous? Moving on to other business. Appointment of at least three members, naming one to serve as chair for the following committees, finance. Uh, Clay is currently the chair. Dick, are you good with continuing to dual serve on everything?
Yes, I am.
Alright, uh, I'm, uh, Clay Davis for the finance committee. I'm gonna appoint Clay Davis as chair, Dick Morris as vice chair, Wanda Howell and Cal Oxford. Planning committee, we have Dick Morrow as chair, Ms.- Ms. Fannie Delaney. Do you wanna continue to serve as vice chair?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Fannie as vice chair, Gwen Flowers Taylor and Jeff Brandon. And then the bylaws committee, we got Gwen Flowers Taylor as chair, Jim Skinnerd and Clay Davidson. Does everybody give those appointments?
For the finance committee, we're gonna have the same dates that we've been having, just so there's no question about it.
Same with the planning.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to jump around to another committee? Alright, Charlie, you got all that? Basically same as it was.
Next meeting, February.
I don't know, it's a different date according to the calendar.
Yes.
At the moment, I think we have- Before the meeting as usual for-
Twelve February, for finance, twelve February.
Yeah, and the planning, what's it?
First, first Wednesday?
First Wednesday.
Yep.
So I foresee two separate meetings next time because there's a lot on the, on the agenda.
However, I do find the planning and finance joint meetings to be very helpful.
I knew two, I, I actually, I kinda like that better, but that's up to them.
We'll, we'll, we'll see what's there. But I understand.
Remember, anybody can go to the meetings, just you can't vote. It's an issue with Quorum. You're not a voting member if you're on, if finance goes to the planning committee or something like that. That's the real difference on it, is voting.
You can go to all of them, so if you wanna, jump in.
God, it may not have a job.
Alright, I'd like to, the next regular scheduled meeting will be held Wednesday, February twenty-twenty-six, twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-five. I'm not processing numbers, like, in the courthouse, say next meeting room. Secretary of Treasury comments?
None.
Well, you just took scene right out of that. General manager comments?
None.
Authority member comments, starting with Ms. Fannie Delaney.
Hope it's not too late to say Happy New Year to everybody. And, um, and pray that we will continue on this direction that we're going with the board because it's, seemed to be going well and thanks to the staff, Joseph and the staff and to everybody for the things that I've seen that's happening on this, really great.
I think Parker has accomplished a lot of stuff in the past year. And we found out he actually speaks.
That was in July we found that out, right?
Yeah, yeah. I ain't heard him since, but you know. Cal? Please.
Uh, please, uh, help join me in, uh, congratulating, uh, Wanda Howell as the, uh, Georgia State Time Ally Dealer of the Year Award. Secondly, I'd like to just make a comment about the finance committee. We're risk managers with you all. Our job is to say, here's how the numbers, and this is a risk or not. Uh, and for us all to look at it, we'll make some, uh, recommendations, but our job is always to be watching the negative side of it to make sure that the money is there and all of that stuff. So sometimes when you look at it, you may say, come on, get on board with this, Clay. Our job is to advise you all to make sure everybody understands what's going on and here's the positives and here's the negatives of it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Juan?
I'll just concur, Happy New Year. Also, we're being very productive and I'm proud to be part of it.
Ms. Gwen?
I'm done.
Uh-oh. Jim? Jim?
Nothing.
Nothing?
So our, our job in the planning committee is to plan and let you worry about whether we can afford it or not.
Your job is to plan, our job is to shoot you down.
Um, only comment I got is, you know, the funding discussions we had in our last committee meeting, the new puddle of water that we talked about, um, we need to get rolling on that, um, sooner than later.
And, uh- Put it on our agenda.
Yeah, well, we need to-
We'll be, we'll be talking about it.
We need to know what everybody kinda wants to do. I, I need, sooner than later. Um, outside of that, I think we had a great year last year and, um, I promised Joseph we was gonna move a little bit slower this year, obviously I lied to him.
That's okay.
That's it.
He can handle it.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Awesome, good job, sir.
Adjourn.